May it die, Mr. Armstrong.
Father God, we thank you for your wonderful love, the grace, the wisdom, and your tender mercy to govern our hearts, our minds, and our deeds. May we use our talent and our gift to edify you that we may provide for the people we serve. These blessings we ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Let us pause for a moment of silence for Belma Louise Evans, grandmother of Patrolman Eric Nunu of the Bastrop Police Department. Thank you. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is changed, one nation, unafraid, in the name of the Lord. With liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, and I wish to welcome you to this meeting of the Mayor and Board of Alderman. Ms. Goldman, low call to determine a form, please.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Nathan.
Here.
Mr. Armstrong.
Here.
Mr. Locke.
Present.
All present, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Goldman. Item number three, announcements. We want to welcome all of you here and certainly wish you all of the best for a prosperous new year. And I welcome our state Senator, Senator Mike Walsworth. And I know time is of the essence for him, so I'm going to ask him if he would come and give us a presentation about a gift we got for this new year.
I always like bringing gifts, bringing money. And I am speaking on behalf of Commissioner Troy A. Bear, who is head of Alcohol and Tobacco. The City of Bastrop Police Department will receive a $5,000 grant to be used for overtime as they do compliance check and looking for underage drinking, as we all are aware of those things. And so this is a $5,000 grant that'll be going to the City of Bastrop Police Department. Glad on behalf of Commissioner A. Bear to do that.
Thank you so much, Senator.
Mayor, always good to see you and the council members. And we just took our oath of office this past Monday. Sad day in Louisiana. Not because we took the oath of office, because of something that happened that night. But look forward to working. Both me and Senator Thompson and our colleagues in the House really look forward to working with y'all over these next four years.
Thank you so much, Senator.
Edith, call us. We'll be there.
Congratulations to you on your win.
Y'all be careful.
All right.
Have a great night.
Thank you. Announcements. I want to just chat a little bit about the recent events. The demolition of the boiler at the IP. I want to say thank you to all of the departments that worked together, police, fire, and public works. As we planned that event, I have a very good relationship with the IP executives. They stayed in touch with me. We issued a joint press release and everything went off, and I mean that literally, as planned, went off and went down. But thanks to all of the employees that helped make that a reality, in addition with the Sheriff's Department. You will hear a presentation from our auditor a little later on in this meeting, but I want to say thank you to this Board of Alderman. We have worked extremely well together. We stepped into office at a very critical time in the economy as well as in the revenue situation in the City of Bastrop. We joined the rest of the country having had to struggle and make adjustments, but we hit the ground running. We knew when we came into this that we were gonna have to tighten our belts, and we worked very hard to do so in cutting back and having to look at a $1.3 million loss in our revenue. And as they leveled the land over International Paper Company, we know that more is yet to come. But I don't say that to be the voice of doom, it's just a reality, and I don't want anybody to ever think that I'm being deceitful to the public. We have to be constantly vigilant about our expenditures and our staffing. And the department heads have worked extremely hard as we have had to make cuts over the past couple of years of this administration. But we have worked well, and thank you to everyone for that. We have ethics training on January the 18th. Three sessions beginning at 10:30, the next one at 12:00. There are 30-minute intervals in between and 1:30. Mr. Durham from the Ethics Office is going to be conducting these trainings. The Governor promised that he was gonna tighten up on ethics, so we have made this event available to surrounding villages who need to send their employees. So please remember the ethics training. Also, the Memory Miracle Project went over extremely well again this time. And as you know, we tried to do something for every segment of our community. We have to look out for our businesses. We have to look out for our citizens, neighborhoods. And we have to look out for our children, too. In all ways, you're gonna have the less fortunate with you. And for that reason, we have the Memory Miracle where we address needed children and families during the holidays and sometimes during the course of the year. Invariably, I will get a call or a visit from someone in a very urgent situation. You can't use public money to address those situations, but we're all human and bear level of responsibility for our fellow man as well as to ourselves. Because when you look into the eyes of your fellow man, you're looking at a part of yourself, and we owe something back to the community. And my heart was really moved this year because, of course, collections of money was down. So the money was down for our Memory Miracle Fund, and we had about 300 children. And some of them, we had to turn away. And I kept thinking, I wish there were a way we could do more. And I got a call from Beekman Elementary School. They had an overflow of toys. And they came up and brought those toys. So we pulled some more application from the Miracle Memory and were able to give more children something for Christmas. And then over the holidays, I came into the office and checked my mail, and I saw a letter from the Magnet School. And I opened it, and it was a check with the children collected to share. And I want to say thank you to all of you who contributed, but I want to recognize the two schools. And I'm gonna ask the two principals, Mr. McCoy, Beekman Elementary, and Ms. Gwynne C., if they would join me at the podium. Ms. C. is the principal of the Magnet School. On behalf of the City of Bastrop and the Memory Miracle Fund, I wish to express my sincere gratitude to you for planting the seed of sharing into the hearts of the children because they are our future.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, and please express our gratitude to the children. You're free to have a comment if you'd like to do so.
You're on TV.
Well, we were just happy when we got the notice, and we hope that we can continue this, that this is not the first year that we do this. And hopefully, next year, we'll be able to give more.
Thank you so much, Ms. C.
I just wanna thank the students and the parents from Beekman Junior High School for being so generous and thinking about others. You know, we're not a wealthy community in Beekman, but we're a generous community, and people, you know, have always been willing to give to help those less fortunate, and we appreciate it. And we just hope that some children had a better Christmas because of things we did. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And it truly made a difference. We are closer to making a formal offering to this council for consideration on the EDA grant, looking at the engineering and design efforts that are ongoing and the progress and improvements at the current industrial site that we have. We're looking at the extension of water and sewage, the drainage capacity, roadways, and access that's already prevalent in that area. Improvements to the 1, I'm sorry, I was about to say 165, the intersection at Nass Street. We've made an appeal, and we have to work with some other agencies on that. So we are closer to making a decision to make an offering to you about the new industrial site or improving the current industrial site. I believe that concludes all of my announcements. Are there any other announcements from the council members? No. Okay. Thank you so much. Item number four, public comments as they relate to items on the agenda. Item number five, approved previous minutes regular meeting December 8th and special meeting January 5, 2012. Let me go back and say December 8, 2011, and the special meeting for January 5, 2012. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Properly moved.
Second.
And second. Are there any questions, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carriers? To our guest, if you would like to be excused as we go through regular, we would not be offended. Appreciate your staying, and you're welcome to stay, but I didn't want to make you feel obligated. Item number six, Finance Committee Report Resolution 12-1422, Bills and Claims for the Month of December 2011. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we accept Resolution 12-1422, Bills and Claims for the Month of December 2011.
Properly moved by Mr. Locke.
Second.
And second by Mr. Nathan. Are there any questions, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carriers? Item number seven. Did I, okay, Finance Committee Report Resolution 1... No, we went over that one.
That's the one we did.
Okay, item number seven. Item number seven, Representative Bubba Chaney, Katrina Jackson, and we just had a visit from Senator Mike Walsworth. But that's in reference to the alcohol and tobacco control, and we have already taken care of that item as a public press release. So we welcome that good news for the Bastrop Police Department. Item number eight, Tommy Williams, Boots Fair, Crawfist. Mr. Fair. Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor, Mr. Williams had to be out of town, his mother was having to have heart surgery. And so I think I did this last year and maybe the year before and so forth. But the annual crawfest is coming up, the 5th of April through April the 8th. And we've got big things planned out there. We will have the same midway that we had for the Cotton Festival last year. And those that you were there will know that we had the cleanest, newest rides that we've had in a long, long time. And we anticipate the same thing this time. And they tell me that we have a good crop of crawfish coming on. And I'd like permission for a beer permit because this is a South Louisiana ordeal that they think if they're gonna eat the crawfish, they gotta have a can of beer or a glass of beer. And it will be in a designated area that they can drink that beer if they're gonna eat the crawfish because this is a family thing, and we don't allow them to walk all the grounds where the children are and so forth with a glass of beer in their hands. And there will be security on the site, and there will be somebody there to check ID to make sure that no underage person buys a glass of beer. So I ask that you will grant us that permit this time.
Okay, Mr. Fair, council members. Thank you, Mr. Fair, for that presentation. And it's good news to hear that we have a good crop of crawfish coming along because I like the big ones.
Yes, and they tell me Paul Ikerd will be doing the cooking, and he tells me that he's promised some good crawfish. And being that early in the year, they should be exceptional. And I hope the prices better than they were last year.
What is your projected date, Mr. Fair?
It's gonna be April the 5th.
April, that's what I was thinking, sometime in April.
This time, normally, we open on Wednesday. But we decided this year to try it on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and then after church on Sunday afternoon, it'll close like at 5 o'clock on Sunday afternoon.
Okay.
So.
Okay. Mr. Lawrence, is there anything, Ms. Goldman? This is kinda early, so I know this is giving ample time to put everything in place that is necessary. There is no action that needs to be taken tonight? And this is January, and the festival is in April? Or what would you suggest, Mr. Lawrence?
I mean, I would suggest unless you know of a reason to not approve it, to go ahead and approve it. That way, Mr. Fair and everybody associated with the project can know now that they have the green light that they need on whatever they need to do.
Okay.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Are we gonna need two resolutions? One for the sale of alcohol and one for the crawfish? Yes or what?
No, I think that what we're doing here is we're suspending the general prohibition against selling of the beer. I mean, in other words, under ordinary circumstances, that may be an area where you can't sell it. Or, and I know you mentioned Sunday.
Right.
You know, it may be a part where we're... But by the action that Mr. Fair is requesting now, that festival will be treated as a standalone event, and they will be exempted from the general rules that prohibit the sale of beer.
It's been going on for years.
Yeah, just wanna make sure.
And as I say, there will be proper security there, and we don't want any mess-ups, so we'll see that it's done right. And we'd like for you to come out and have some crawfish and the roasted corn on the cob and the hamburgers that they do and so forth, and have a good time, and bring the kids and let them enjoy the rides. And I haven't heard about an Easter egg hunt yet, but normally, we have an Easter egg hunt on Saturday. But I haven't heard about that. Kevin Schultz, who has been working with us out there for years, passed away this past Saturday. It's two weeks ago, I believe it was, very suddenly. And he was always in charge of Kids Day and everything, so some of the others of us are trying, gonna have to pick up the ball and see if we can run with it. But I'm sure we're gonna have a good festival, so y'all come out.
Thank you so much, Mr. Fair, and appreciate your dedication to that festival as well as to the fairgrounds for the many, many years of service that you served on that board.
May I add one other thing?
Yes, sir.
Another thing, another thing that's going to be going on at the Ike on Saturday.
At the?
Is a professional bull riding contest.
At the Mac Center?
It's gonna be at the Mac. And we want the Mac to go because, you know, we gave them a 99-year lease on that land so they could get that building built. So we want it to be successful also. So we talked to them about we're gonna tag our advertising for the crawfest about the bull riding going on. They are going to tag their advertising about the crawfish going on next door. And they have agreed. It's a one-day deal. If somebody buys a ticket for the bull riding contest, they will get a separate stub that they will be allowed to come to the crawfest, even if they just want to come and eat without paying a gate fee to get in. So we'll be doing more on that. So we plan to make a big deal out of both events for that weekend.
Thank you for that announcement. Please note that upcoming announcement as indicated by Mr. Fair. At this time, having heard his presentation and the information provided by our city attorney, Mr. Lawrence, what is your pleasure in regards to Mr. Fair's request?
I'll make a motion, Mayor, to grant Mr. Fair permission, his permit. Second.
Properly moved by Mr. Moore and second by Mr. Locke. Are there any questions, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carriers? Item number nine, Ms. Cindy Haynes, Hill, and Xena and company. We will now hear a presentation in reference to our budget. Thank you, Ms. Haynes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I will briefly go through the audit and some related matters. I've already discussed pretty in-depth at the finance committee. So I will briefly go through it again. If anyone has questions, you're more than welcome to ask or get with Mayor or Ms. Goldman or the mayor later. As far as our slide presentation, the budget revenues have been budgeted at $11 million. And this is all in relation to the June 30, 2011 fiscal year. And as I said in the Finance Committee, the City of Bastrop has ran on a $10 to $11 million budget for several, several years. And this year, as the mayor alluded to, some drastic cuts were made in the general fund alone. Well, well over $1 million was cut in expenditures from the previous fiscal year. So like she said, everyone has worked together really hard, made some changes, not that we necessarily wanted to, but had to, and we'll have to continue to do so in the future. You see from the first chart that of the $11 million in general fund revenues, approximately 7.9 million come from taxes. After that, the next largest portion comes from intergovernmental, which is basically your local, state, and federal funding. Then as we proceed to the next... Am I doing the right one? Probably got it wrong. I don't know, you're a... Okay. All right, she's gonna go now, you're standing to work, okay. Okay. The next one, we take the same revenue and break it down as to... Did I really change it? Now, this is what I'm looking for. Okay, then we take the revenue, we break it down. We said taxes was the majority of our revenue. Here we look just at taxes, and you can see that 59% of our revenue comes from sales taxes. 36% approximately comes from ad valorem taxes. And as we talked, and for months now and years, with IP's closure and now the land being cleared, that number is gonna change even more so. So the city is well aware of that and is already in the process of making budget changes that will be necessary. Now we move on to the expenditures, which again are approximately $10 or $11 million revenues and expenditures. So far, we've been able to budget hand in hand, pretty much, not using any of our fund balance. We'll see that the majority of our expenditures are in the general government, which is basically your administrative offices, mayor, council expenditures. Then we have police and the fire, and then all the other sewer streets, recreation, fill-in, the remaining spots. Now, we talked earlier also in the meeting that fire and police continue to increase a little bit every year, whereas the general fund's going down somewhat. The police and fire is continuing to rise, and the majority of that is because of the mandated retirement system. And Ms. Goldman has said that they've already gotten a notice that those percentages are going up again. I think right now, police and fire is around 12%, 15%?
No, it's like 25%.
20, that's right, it was 15. It went up to 25, and now it's going even more. So that's one of those things that's mandated. There's nothing the city can do about it. We've gotta have fire and police services, but just doing the best we can. To look at the expenditures another way, we've categorized again by the same departments or headings and looked at the three years, the past three years, '09, '10, and '11. And you'll see from the first column where the general fund or the general government expenditures have decreased tremendously. You can see all the other departments basically are holding their own. Some have decreased a little bit. But you will see again that the Fire and Police Department are up a little bit, and that is in relation to the retirement contributions. Then last, as far as the charts are concerned, this is a budget comparison to the actual, the green or blue, however it shows up to you, I'm not sure, being the budgeted amounts and the red being the actual. And then you will see that everyone was basically at or below their budgeted expenditures. Okay, I think that finishes the slide presentation. Just another couple highlights or whatever. And Mr. Locke had asked this question in the committee. The city basically overall, if you wanted to put a net worth on it as you would in a private business or whatever, is about $6.5 million. That's all of our capital assets, infrastructure, less our debt and related liabilities. We have a net worth of approximately $6.5 million. The only major, or not the only, but the major capital asset addition during the fiscal year was the sewer rehab project. As of June 30, most of all, the major projects were at a standstill, had been completed, or I shouldn't say standstill, but had been completed. But at this time, we've got several new projects that are underway. Couple more sewer projects, one related to the DG Foods. Ongoing projects always. As I had told them earlier, also, the city received approximately $2.2 million in federal funds. So those are of utmost importance to their funding and revenue sources. And again, like I said, I know this has been brief. If you have any questions, feel free to ask me or Ms. Goldman or the council or mayors at a later date. And the audit report is a public document. We transmit it from our office to the Legislative Board's office within the next few days. And after their review process or whatever, then it is available on their website as a public document. So you could get it either there, or I'm sure anybody at City Hall would be glad to give you a copy. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes, for that report. And as she indicated, her report is reflective of the hard work that had to occur over the past months. Item number 10, Resolution 12-1424, Designating Certain Immovable Private Property as Planned Development. I believe, Mr. Lawrence, we were talking about special note in reference to the...
Yes, ma'am.
Public hearing.
And since I spoke with you, Mayor, right before the start of the meeting, I conferred with the city clerk, and she assured me, I think, that we had satisfied the requirements regarding the 5:30 posting of the public hearing on this. And this is the matter at the bottom of the agenda. It relates to number 10. So we're okay in that procedural step, and we're prepared now to take up this agenda item.
Okay. Mr. Steve Peery.
Mayor, if I could speak on this just briefly for a moment, for about 30 seconds.
Please, please do so.
One of the things that I saw when I did a review of the documentation sent to me by the city clerk is that the Bastrop City Planning Commission had voted and approved the recommendation to be brought forward to this body regarding this particular request. And that was coupled with also a recommendation from the city zoning administrator. And they had some specific parameters that they were recommending regarding this planned development. In other words, they were approving it, but there are, I think, some items regarding lot sizes and all of that that they... sizes and all of that that they got into great detail on. And this body needs to know, they, they, that body, which is the body that does that, really got into it and set for some parameters that they put in writing. And the way that this resolution is drafted, it is, if you so approve this, it would be subject to those terms and conditions coming forward from that commission as well as from your zoning administrator. And at this point, that's all that I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. I attended that public hearing, and it was very informative. Mr. Perry, I'm gonna yield to you in your presentation.
And I do. I thank you, Mayor, and council for allowing us to come here and show you our plan. We're, something we're very proud of. But I would ask that, that I could get a copy of, of the planning commissions, I guess that would be guidelines that they kind of laid out?
Yeah, I, I had it on my computer electronically when I looked at it.
And I could email you.
Okay, good. That's great. We just need that to go by. But again, I thank y'all for allowing us to come here. Most of the council and the mayor knows it's something we've been working on for some time. It's something that, that I'm very proud of, and I think the city and mayor and council will be very proud of once we're complete. What we're asking and what went through the planning and zoning was to make a few changes to, we really didn't ask for changes to zoning. We asked for this planned use development inside the zone that we're in. So it did go through the, that process, planning process. And I wish also to thank the Planning and Zoning Commission. They were very professional and, and worked hard and were very open to, to our ideas and suggestions. But what we're asking for is that, that planned use development. And we also, if it's okay, would like time to, to kind of show you what we've got laid out.
Yes, sir.
Show you what, what we've got planned. Mr. Breckenridge is an architect of record on, on this particular job and, and can really get into any questions. Of course, I'll answer any questions too, but he, he can kind of go over this with you if you'd like for him to. Would that be something you'd like to hear, Mayor? Is that like something to do?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. I'll just have Mr. Doug Breckenridge. He'll present this.
Mayor, would you like pretty much the same presentation that we gave Planning and Zoning?
Yes, sir. I think that this council will find it very informative. It was very interesting, and I certainly appreciated it.
May I move away from this microphone? I'm used to walking around and pointing.
Okay, how?
I won't hear it.
Okay, what about a listening audience, Mr.?
They won't hear it if you walk away. Okay, Steve, could we move that thing a little bit closer?
Mr. Breckenridge, you, you are televised, so because we have a TV audience, if you move away from the mic, the audio will be lost on TV.
I understand.
Okay.
My notes are on these things, and let's see if we can move... Can everybody see it? Unfortunately, my key points are on here, and I can't see them. I may get lost in the dialogue. Primarily, what we're addressing here is conservation of energy.
Excuse me. Mr. Floyd, if we turn, I mean, your back would be to the audience, but if it helps you in making your presentation, we could turn the microphone around and just have the camera span in on his presentation, then put it back on him when he is finished.
Would this be all right? I can see now.
Okay, that works.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
After thirty-something years of doing this, I use these to key my presentation, and I don't have notes or anything. Essentially, what we're discussing here, if we're talking about energy and, and the use of, are the limited resources, and most people don't realize buildings are the biggest users of energy. In fact, roughly thirty percent of all energy in the United States is consumed by buildings, roughly sixty percent of all electricity. So about nineteen ninety-three, a quasi-political agency called the United States Green Building Council was formed to address these issues. And trying to abbreviate all this information, what they did is they prepared a series of guidelines or reference guides. And these reference guides address schools and new buildings, remodeling, in this case, LEED for homes, all different building categories and how to conserve energy. How this relates to this, this particular project, the Louisiana Housing Financial Agency, which is the agency for affordable housing and tax credits in the state of Louisiana, amongst other things, two years ago, as their guidelines ask that each applicant, Steve, for instance, submit their projects that adhere to these guidelines. So in order to get this project, Steve had to go through all these guidelines, or actually he and I did, and decide what was relevant to this project, and then put together a package. And from that package and these concepts, Steve was awarded the funding. So in essence, it's, it's very important that, that we meet these guidelines because we, in essence, have already kind of more or less had the application. Briefly, the site plan, it's a beautiful site. It's, it's located, as you're probably well aware, on the northeast section of town. To me, it appears to be a gateway on the old Bastrop Highway or the old Monroe Highway, as you guys call it. I call it the old Bastrop Highway. And an area that's been somewhat neglected for years, and to me, this is a catalyst, you know, to kind of revive the area. And that was one of the things I wrote in my application form. The property itself is, is very beautiful. It's wooded, and in this corner, it was a real deep, dry ravine. And so the, the basic concept behind the whole, or theme behind this whole project is to develop and preserve. So in essence, we just carved out part of the site for the development, and then we left this area down in the dry creek bed as kind of a natural habitat. And this is something that, that LEEDs really appreciate. They, they appreciate any, leaving any type of green area or open space or something rather than, in essence, putting houses or, or flattening or filling that up and making it a big flat area and cutting down the trees. They appreciate acclimating developments into the green environment. Basically, the houses are, as I said, are arranged on this area. They're about, I think there's thirty-eight of them, if I'm not mistaken, thirty-eight lots. They are three sizes. There's, and I'll talk to these, show you these later. There's a small three-bedroom, there's a large three-bedroom, and there's a four-bedroom. They are arranged primarily in a direction that, that faces east, I mean, south and north. There are no windows or fenestrations on the east and west, and this is primarily because of sun. So we're trying to acclimate towards the positioning on the lot and, and keep the sun from entering the house and eating, and heating up the house. All south-facing windows have, have overhangs over them. All north-facing windows, of course, the sun doesn't enter on the north face. This area here is, one of the major problems and things that LEED addresses is, is flow of water and not overloading, overloading city stormwater systems. So we're using this natural habitat in here and draining, you know, the subdivision into the natural habitat and using it as a natural filtering mechanism rather than, than overloading it into the city sanitary of a city storm system. There is a natural buffer that's left along Daisy. So we're gonna leave about a hundred yards here and leave the trees in there. So in essence, when you drive by, there's a buffer between the, the very public area and the residential area, which gives them some sense of privacy. Basically, there's a community center, there's a children's play area, and then there's, there's accessible routes overlooking the natural space. Also throughout the development, and to, to encourage pedestrian traffic, we have sidewalks and then everywhere, in, in the cases where we have long stretches of road, what we've done is we've elevated that walkway. So that the walkway, you go up the sidewalk, and you go straight across the street at the same angle, and then it tapers on the street. And these are twofold, not only pedestrian traffic, but also to discourage people from speeding. So you, you see them here and here, so, and, and here, actually. So everywhere somebody could give a good head of speed, they, they know, they realize they're gonna hit this traffic softening device. So, so that's a twofold process. Density, and this gets down to pretty much the, the aspect of, of the PUD, is, is density. LEED tries to get people to reduce the sizes of lots. So they want the lots reduced from what was typical in the nineteen sixties and nineteen seventies. It helps from the standpoint of, of greenery, it helps from maintenance, it helps, in essence, to preserve. Without this density, we wouldn't be able to create this natural area. One of the density elements they ask for is seven lots in one acre. And seven lots in one acre takes about six thousand square feet. And the, the current city regulation, as it is in practically every city across the south that I've worked in, or Louisiana, is about seventy-two or seven thousand. So that's the aspect of one of the PUDs. A project that I worked on in Monroe is, is Louisiana, which is a new urbanist development there off, off Forsyth. And we, in essence, did the same thing there. We've got lots in there from forty, forty by sixty, and fifty by sixty, and sixty by a hundred. And we literally went in there, it was twenty-five acres, and carved that piece of property out and applied for a PUD, much in the same instance we're asking you now, so we could deviate a little bit from the normal zoning and practices in order to make this newer business development work. So that's essentially the principle behind it. Let's see, Steve, let's try that section. Yeah, that's it. I'll talk a little bit about the energy conservation in each project, in each house. Can everybody see this? Essentially, these are really, really energy-efficient houses. In fact, there's probably not any in North Louisiana in any income bracket that, that matches this house. Concepts are using foam insulation to wrap the house and hermetically seal the, not only the, the interior space, but also the attic. So the attic becomes a conditioned area. And in this regard, typically, we can run the duck in here, and we don't have to worry too much about leakage and things like that, because it's not leaking out into a humid, hot attic. It's leaking into a conditioned space. And hypothetically, what you might find is ninety degrees out here, you know, eighty degrees in here, and seventy degrees here. So it really has proven to be very, very efficient. The technology's been around since about nineteen ninety-one. I heard a presentation on it from an architect in, in Austin in nineteen ninety-one. I heard the same presentation last, two months ago in Streetport, and, and the gentleman is still very much behind the technology. So the, the house is very tight, it's double-wrapped, it has insulation or has an open cavity behind the brick, so air comes up behind the brick and goes out at the top. Anything over an unconditioned space is vented in the old-fashioned way. The attic is open or the area is open, and, and the natural air ventilates in there. But any area over a conditioned space, in essence, has conditioned area above it to help buffer that, that tremendous heat from the roof. So this is very advanced. There's, there's a couple of higher-end homes in, in, in North Louisiana that have it, but affordable housing, this is the way Louisiana Housing Financial Agency is going, is they're trying to prompt this or get this going in affordable housing projects all over the United States. Or all over Louisiana, I'm sorry. Primarily, you may have to hold that one. We have, as I said, we have three housing types. We have a unit A, which is a smaller three-bedroom. We have a unit B, which is, which is a mid-range three-bedroom, and we have a, a unit C, which is a four-bedroom. The concept behind the exterior of the house, which I'll, I'll show you in a perspective later, let's see, let me set that right there, everybody can see it. What we're doing is we're addressing the wooded aspects of the lot. So we were looking for an architectural vocabulary that, that, that fit in with the wooded area, and what we selected was a craftsman style. Craftsman style originated, I don't know, nineteen oh five, something like that, lasted up to about nineteen thirty. Bastrop's got a lot of nice craftsman-style homes back in this area, in these areas. And we use that because, in essence, it emphasizes nature. It was a, give you a little bit of history lesson, at the end of the, or the industrial revolution, at the end of the last century, people, there was a reaction against machines and people living in tight quarters, and there was a return to wanting to live in nature. And craftsman style was that move to, to bring people back to nature. So in essence, craftsman style and the natural aspects of this lot, we felt, went hand in hand. What the LHFA is trying to do is they're trying to get away from these prototypes. You know, you can go to Alexander and you can see Affordable Housing Project, and it looks just like the one in Rabel, and it looks just like the one in Arcadia, et cetera. And what we did is we want to approach it as an individual entity. We don't want to approach it from a stereotype. We wanted to give people roughly different colors, different shapes, different sizes, all within the same craftsman-style vocabulary. We want to give them a sense of identity. We don't want them to look, feeling like they're part of the masses. We want them to know that this is their house, and it's got this color on it, and it's got this gable on it. And now this house may be repeated five or six houses down, you know, but it may have a slightly different color to it. It may have brick here instead of hardy board. The materials, in essence, are hardy board, which is a cementitious board, it's a green material. It's color-impregnated, so you don't have to paint it. It's, it's in the material, the color's in the material, no painting, and then we're using masonry, and then we're using, obviously, shingles. Let me think, what else? Do you think of any?
I think you've covered it.
Think I've covered it? Are there any questions or?
Yes, I have one.
Yes, sir.
On this hardy board?
Mm-hmm.
You said there's no paint?
It's color-impregnated. It's through the paint.
No need to paint. When it's up, it's, it's got the color, it'll leak.
The duration of the house, life of the house?
It's through and through. The paint is, is in it through and through, so it doesn't wear down. It's not painted.
Where, where?
It's designed, and that's a lot of what LEED does too. A lot of their, their plan is to develop something that is very low maintenance. And as you can see from his presentation, as far as comparable-sized home, the energy efficiency will be well beyond what's, what's typical. And, and that's something that can be factored into an affordable home.
For the bedrooms? Would there be, as you mentioned, two, three, or four?
No, threes and fours. There, there are two styles of three-bedrooms, and then just the one four-bedroom.
Okay. And the, the hardy plank, right now, we, we've been involved in, in infill housing in South Monroe, and we recently did three, three houses in that area. And we used vinyl siding, and then we priced vinyl siding, we priced the hardy plank color-impregnated. I think the hardy plank was only two thousand dollars a house higher, and it's a much more durable product. So we're, in essence, using that in South End of Monroe and a lot of infill housing.
What about costs?
Rent is still being set up as a rent of development for the first fifteen years. And the rent, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Four seventy-five for the three-bedroom and five fifty for the four-bedroom. And, and that's, I was very, I, I was awarded home funds on top of the tax credits, which made it possible for me to keep the rents very low. And I, I mean, that was important. You know, I've worked with the mayor, and by the way, the mayor and the council have just been great, you know, any, any help. I really appreciate what you guys have done. But, but that was part of the plan too initially, just to, to develop a, a property that is, that we can all be proud of, that can, is very affordable as far as energy efficiencies and very affordable as far as rents.
Did you mention how many units?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight.
Yes. And, and the, the community center too, which is a, is a pretty, it's an important part of the development. It's, the management company is there, but that community center is available for the tenants. At this point, we're working with some people here in town to do some continuing education for the tenants in that community center.
Ms. Rogers, I don't mean to put you on the spot. Ms. Rogers serves on the zoning board, and if you would, Ms. Rogers, would you come and talk about the meeting and some of the particulars of, of the resolution?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We saw this same presentation that Mr. Perry and Mr. Breckenridge presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission. We did vote in favor of it. The Planning and Zoning Commission had one stipulation that there be more lighting than what they had. The administrator, Mr. Lee, had recommended that there be a perimeter fence to keep down crime and outside persons just walking through the area that were not wanted there or not native to that area. We felt that it would bring more affordable housing to the citizens here, maybe to someone who was looking into moving into the city. That would be affordable as far as rent, affordable as far as utilities. They have a park that they could go to there. And there was also a good aspect in that there would be a management company there that would kind of oversee and tend to the grounds, kind of administer the people who came in and out of the area. So we felt that it would be a good recommendation for the city in affordable housing. It would be good for different businesses within the city. It would bring income into the city that maybe from people who come in outside, or maybe people who, if they have a little bit more affordable housing, they could spend their money elsewhere at some of the businesses. they could spend their money elsewhere at some of the businesses and it would help the businesses out here.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council.
You have heard the presentation, all of the presentations and the points of view. And Mr. Lawrence has, has brought out some particulars in regarding to this resolution. Haven't heard this information.
A question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Armstrong. Concerning the context area, we have suburban, urban, center, and special. On the zoning application, it doesn't say, was it suburban or urban? On the zoning application, it's forced to checklist here?
Yes.
It's, it's got a R E S T.
Suburban, yeah. It would be probably checked off as suburban. But we're inside that with the, with that plan use, it kind of changes things. You know, we're in, we're not changing zoning. We're just asking for a variance, I guess, is what it would have to be.
Yeah, it's, as I said, a best example, I think, that I've worked on recently in this area is Louisiana. And we just generally go into an area and just kind of change the rules to make it, within just that area, to make it a more workable residential neighborhood. And the, and the theme is, as you're well aware, is getting away from big houses and big money and big lots. And, and this, in essence, is going in that, in that direction, more affordable property, more manageable property.
I've got a question for you, Mr. Perry. What would be the criteria for it? I mean, is it limited to low income or anybody that want to move in or what?
It's, it's sixty percent, your income has to be no more than sixty percent of area median income. And there's a provision where there's a fifty percent, the home funds. I think there'll be like four units that'll be fifty percent restricted.
Thank you for those questions. Those were all very good questions. Ms. Rogers brought up about the fencing and the lighting. Mr. Perry, you want to speak to that before we?
We, we'll, we'll deal with it. Whatever, whatever's asked, I, I'm sure it'll be reasonable. But the fencing is something that, that we've discussed. And perimeter fencing is, is good and we'll, that'll be dealt with. That, we'll, we'll do that. The, the problem that I might would have, and I don't think that they've asked for this, would be fencing across the street so that you have to have a card to enter, you know, that, like a keyed entry. I don't think they're asking for that, are you?
No, we won't.
Yeah, I would, I would be, you know, the fencing's not an issue then, you know, to deal with. Lighting, I'm not sure exactly, but there again, we'll deal with that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for, for that presentation. Thank you, Mr. Perry, for all of your hard work and commitment to bringing development into this area. What is your pleasure? Can I refer to?
May I make a motion that we adopt Resolution twelve, that's one four two four?
I second the motion, Mayor.
Properly moved and seconded. Are there any questions, discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item number eleven, Resolution one-two dash one-four-two-five, a resolution of the Mayor and Board of Alderperson's of the City of Bastrop, Louisiana, City to engage the services of North Delta Regional Planning and Development District Incorporated to develop a redistricting plan forming the election districts of the Board of Alderman for the City of Bastrop based on the twenty-ten decennial census that may be necessary and proper. Mr. Lawrence, will you speak to this?
Yes, ma'am. This is to authorize the redrawing of the, all the person's election districts for each of the five of you. As you know, every ten years, the census is taken and every ten years becomes necessary to review the, the, the current zones that you're elected from to make sure that in population, those zones are as equal as possible as split five different ways. This organization, North Delta Regional Planning and Development District, Inc., has a long history and a long association with public bodies here in northeast Louisiana. Mr. David Creed, who runs that organization, who's the main demographer there, is a, a person who has worked quite a bit with public bodies in Morehouse Parish in doing and handling their redistricting work. The other thing I would hasten to point out is this. I saw his price and his price is about one-third to one-fifth of what other people are charging for the same work. And in light of that, and in light of the quality of this work, which is really second to none, I would, I would recommend that you adopt the resolution because you got to do this, you got to pay somebody. And it just so happens that you'll be getting one of the most experienced people for one of the better prices. And that price is good because this is a not-for-profit organization that he works for. And this not-for-profit organization serves cities and municipalities and parishes. That's chiefly what they do. And I think you need to get this done as soon as you can, but definitely before the end of this year. Because in some of our neighboring areas, they're running into some problems because they haven't gotten it done and they have elections coming up. And therein is, you know, is the problem for that area. But for us, we just need to do it and get it done as quickly as possible and get it done before the end of this year.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lawrence. I met with Mr. Creed, very impressed with him. He worked with, with us on the EDA grant, that one-point-eight-million-dollar grant that we are receiving for our new or additional industrial site. And I feel very comfortable in making this recommendation to you. And as Mr. Lawrence indicated, this is a necessity, something that we have to do in respect of the ten-year census report. You will have an opportunity to talk with Mr. Creed and recognize there's a five percent deviation one way or the other as these districts are divided up. So having said that.
Mayor, can I say that? Just add something to what you said?
Certainly.
Because I think all of you need to understand, Mr. Creed is going to want to talk to you about how these zones, how your election districts are going to be drawn. So you'll have some input with him. He will be talking with you and, and these zoning plans will be prepared for you and the public to be able to speak to that before anything done is done final. Thank you.
Thank you for that observation, Mr. Lawrence. We are doing this now, getting ahead of the game and playing enough time. You may ask why now? Of course, after the census report, they, they give time for folks to contest what the county is. So we're getting started as soon as we possibly can. So I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, Mayor.
Properly moved by Mr. Moore.
Seconded.
And seconded by Mr. Johnson. Do you have any questions, discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Item number twelve, liquor license renewal. Acting Chief, Mike Duffy.
Mayor and Council. We have two renewals, Club Two-O-One and Morehouse Country Club. And then we have two new ones, Jimmy's Lounge and the Forte House Liquor on North Washington. And recommend that they be approved pending the state.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mike Duffy. Any other particulars we need to? We usually do them in batch quantities, don't we?
Yes, in other words, since they've been publicly identified on the record and because the police department has, has indicated that they've done their investigation and there is no basis for denying the licenses, generally, you should approve those licenses because their investigation says there's no reason to deny them.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make that motion.
Properly moved by Mr. Armstrong.
I seconded the motion.
And seconded by Mr. Moore. Are there any questions, discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, sir. Item number thirteen, discussion action. I accept bids for surplus removal property chairs. Ms. Goldman.
Mayor, we seek one bid. And this is for some used chairs that we have. And the bid was from Ms. Vera Turk. She's with the parent and community of our. She bided three hundred dollars for fifty chairs. And I recommend we accept this bid.
Thank you, Ms. Goldman. These are surplus chairs. We replaced the chairs at the municipal center and I believe we pulled out what we replaced and use them in other parts of the city. And, and these were extra chairs. And this is an organization, a nonprofit organization, I believe, that is in need of it. And I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion, Mayor.
All right, I heard some multiple movements down there, so I don't know how to identify whose name.
I second it, Mayor.
And seconded by Mr. Lawrence. Are there any questions, discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. I believe we're taking care of everything for this meeting, Ms. Goldman, is that correct? Let me also mention that the apartments, the historic school, before we close out, and I was intending to do this under announcement, they are now accepting applications. The office is open down there. So just let the folks know in your district that they are accepting applications. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting. Properly moved by Mr. Johnson and seconded by?
Seconded.
By Mr. Armstrong. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.